I call this September 16th. Regular session of the Oconee County Board of Education to order. First item of business, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Mr. Burgess?
Second.
Mr. Ransome, all in favor?
Passes 5-0.
Next, we need a motion to approve the minutes from our August 12th regular session, our public millage hearing number one, public millage hearing number two, and our special session from August 23rd. And we need also a motion for our September 9th work session.
So move.
Mr. Hammack?
Ms. Parrish?
Ms. Parrish, all in favor? Passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is recognitions. Mr. Caulkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Argo. Good evening, Dr. Branch and board members. We do have some folks to recognize this evening, so if you'll join us up front, and as you do that, I'll point out that our art display for this month is from Cullen Ferry Elementary School. Their instructor is Allison Winter. And as you can see from these slides, we've got some world-class art being produced at the school. I'm sure that the Cullen Ferry Points of Pride, we'll mention that later as well, but these will be on display for this evening, but also for the entire month. First this evening, the Oconee County High Schools Alumni Association, represented by the Board of Directors, is awarding $1,000 grants to the Oconee County High School and North Oconee High School Agriculture Departments. These grants will be used for a submitted list of items, equipment, and/or supplies needed by those classrooms. First, I'll call up Oconee County High School.
We want to welcome Cullen Ferry Elementary.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Branch, and community. I am Katherine Brown. I am the proud principal at Cullen Ferry Elementary School. And we are very, we are very excited tonight to share about our ag explorations program. So as you know, Cullen Ferry has implemented STEM practices for the past 10 years or so, and has been STEM certified through the Georgia Department of Education since 2017. So our STEM certification allows students the opportunity to explore science, technology, engineering, and math. But also, one of the core focus areas that our students have really dug deep into with those STEM concepts is through agriculture. So in an effort to continue to expand and improve our programming, a little over two years ago, we decided to add an ag activity class. So in addition to our STEM activity class, we felt that this would give our students increased opportunities for hands-on learning with ag-related concepts. So tonight, I have Mrs. Colby Mormon, our ag teacher, who is going to share more about the importance of our ag program, and some of the innovative things that our students are getting to explore through this class every week. So I'm going to turn it over to Colby.
Good evening, Board. I am Colby Mormon. I am the proud ag teacher at Cullen Ferry Elementary. And I mean, I could stand up here and talk definitions all night, and I think that math kind of solidifies and makes things a little bit better. So I did some digging and some math, and I got some numbers. So I know y'all know that there are about 1,852 public elementary schools in the state of Georgia. Of those elementary schools, only 34 are certified in STEM. And of those same 1,852 schools, only about 50 say they have an ag program as of a couple years ago. But Cullen Ferry is very unique in the sense that we are the only elementary school that offers an agriculture program in a STEM-certified school. So, very lucky and excited to be able to provide both to our students. So we base our lessons, or I base my lessons, around our four pillars that you can see up there. So foundations of ag, careers, natural resources, and our ag systems. And whenever we can involve STEM, we tend to do so as well. So every day, I begin my class with an ag trivia, and the kids love it, and the stickers are fun, but it also ties into what we're doing or learning that day. So you can see some of the fun ag trivia that we do. But across the state of Georgia, ag is the leading professional industry. And about 1 in 7 adults in their lifetime, or in their career, will work in the field of ag. And actually, one of my ag trivias for this week is that ag engineering is actually the top ag career in the whole country. So it just really ties into our STEM foundation and why we do, why we combine STEM and ag at Cullen Ferry. So I just want to show you a few things and how, explain how we put the STEM into ag. So you can see our beautiful showcase garden. So that started as an engineering design process. Students were given the fact that we have this area, we don't have anything to do with it, so take our engineering design process, design me something that we can use and showcase to our community. So they worked through the process, and then we involved our community through the help of women in construction and college pro landscaping and a couple other experts that came in throughout the process. They designed, helped build, and now we have a beautiful showcase garden, which just tends and leads to many different math, science, technology, engineering, I mean, you name it, we can involve any lesson into that showcase garden. But it also, all of the produce that comes from our garden and our six amazing chicken ladies, and we also have two bunnies, but they don't really give us any produce, all of that leads to our Mustang Market. So you can see our wonderful picture up there with our student leaders. And at least once or twice a month, depending on what we have going on, we'll have our Mustang Market where we get to sell back our produce to our community. And in return, the money is put back into our STEM program and continues to feed our animals and soil and all of the needs and upkeep, because there are a lot. Our chicken lifestyles, our life cycle. So last spring, we were able to successfully hatch out 23 out of 24 eggs. And I would like to say it was because we put a lot of data and time and science behind it. We were weighing our eggs, candling our eggs, we did a school-wide vote on which egg would hatch the first, and just lots of graphs around the room, lots of data, but just trying to get the whole school on one topic. And it was a lot of fun, and then we had a lot of babies, and now they're in my backyard. Our pig show down there in the corner was our first year for our 5th graders. I wanted our 5th graders to kind of look forward to something throughout their school years at Cullen Ferry, so I figured, why not do something, kind of go out with a bang. So yeah, that's a picture of our fun day. However, the background is about a month and a half worth of research and communication with their 5th grade teachers. They were given a summative report from their research. Then they had to create, design a pig. We did the math behind how big an area pig show is. I invited outside experts, so we had outside judges who actually breed pigs, show pigs. So it was a whole big community day, but it was a big process behind the scenes as well, so not just that one day, but it was a really fun day. And throughout the year at Cullen Ferry, we also have a STEM council. And our STEM council is made up of teachers, admin, and community helpers, our community support. There's some college professors on there, but throughout our meetings, kind of one thing leads to the next, and that is how we ended up having a precision ag day last year. So one of our STEM council members was involved, or was asked by the University of Georgia to kind of do an outreach in the community about precision ag. If you don't know or not familiar with what precision ag is, it's basically taking the data behind agriculture to improve the planting, managing, and harvesting of their crops. So we were able to collaborate with UGA and Chris Greer Photography, so he was able to film, which will be broadcasting on Georgia Public Broadcasting in probably about a month or so. While we had different stations, they learned about self-driving tractors and the data behind irrigation, and it was just a really fun day to bring in that outside community STEM into our ag program. So I think we have a little clip of his preview of the video. Do I just push? Okay, good.
It's crazy to think they can move by themselves without like, having someone actually drive it. Like, that's always been a dream of like, something that would happen, and now it's actually happening. And I think it's really cool that you can use that to make everything as perfect, so that can have more crops.
So, stay tuned for the whole film of that.
It's crazy to think they can move by themselves.
So, obviously, we're really happy and excited about what we do and the work we do at Cullen Ferry with our STEM and ag program.
I'm Mike Stanton, this is the principal at Cullen Ferry. I want to tell you about our future. So we are never settled. We're always going to continue to improve our programs. Our next step is to increase our farm-to-table initiative. We've been working with our cafeteria staff and teachers to produce lessons that bring our produce back into the classroom and connects recipes to the things they're learning. So for example, our 4th graders are learning about westward expansion, so they're going to be making potato cakes from the potatoes that they produce in our gardens. Recently, our precares and our 1st graders churn butter, and they also use eggs that produce from our hens to make cookies after they read the book, If You Give a Mouse a Cookie. They wanted to share some of those with you, so Ms. Doe has those for you, and some eggs from our chickens as well, our hens. Do any of you have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is presentations and discussions. First, we have business services. Welcome, Mr. Adams.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. Business Services has seven items of information and no action items for tonight's board meeting. Our first item of information is our August cash balances report. Our second item of information is a list of all vendors' payments made in August. The third item of information is the budget report for August. Revenue and expenditures are where we would expect to be at this point of the fiscal Our fourth item of information is our budget report from June. This is the closeout, unaudited fiscal year '24 budget report.
Sorry, I can't help you.
Oops. Yes, you can. Our fifth item of information is our ELOS collections report. We do have a decrease for the month of 2.96. But for the month-over-month, we had a 2.9% increase, so we're still showing real strong in our ELOS collections. Our next item of information is our ELOS 6 report. Revenues and expenditures have been updated through August 31st. And our last item of information tonight is our federal funds report. And this report has been updated through August 31st. And as a reminder, this is a reimbursement-based, and we'll see these funds paid out to us throughout the fiscal year. And that concludes my report, unless there are any questions the board has.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is communications to the board. Mr. Caulkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Argo. We have 20 citizens sign up to address the board this evening. Before we begin, I'll read this. Policies BCBI and BCBIR-1 state that only Oconee County residents or school system employees may address the board, and that members of the public shall conduct themselves in respectful manner that is not disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. The board allows three minutes for those who sign up prior to the meeting. Please state your name, address, and topic. The board requests that you refrain from making any disparaging remarks about school system personnel. Generally, there will be no response to comments or questions posed by citizens at the meeting. All comments and questions will be taken under advisement by the board. However, any board member shall be free to respond and make public comments if he or she elects to do so. To any citizen wishing to provide documents for board members, please submit them to the Director of Communications before the meeting or prior to addressing the board. Please remain at the podium during your public comment time. Our first speaker is Sally Jarrett.
Welcome, Ms. Jarrett.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sally Jarrett. I live at 112 Arborwood Ridge, Bishop, Georgia. I have a little boy in 3rd grade at High Schultz Elementary School, and I am here tonight to talk to you about school safety. I am also here, as you can see, alongside many concerned parents, all of whom, like my family, love our school system and want the best opportunities for our students, for our children. After all, Oconee County is committed to student success. But we know that student success cannot be achieved without the provision of safety. Indeed, OCS's own mission is to provide a safe and challenging learning environment that inspires all students to capture their dreams. We are asking tonight for the board to prioritize the implementation of an SRO program as an additional layer of security and prevention to be placed in all 12 of our schools. I give this presentation specifically with three other parents who have worked tirelessly over the course of the last several weeks, researching and considering school safety and the measures that could, and indeed should, be taken in Oconee County. Our group researched SRO programs of nearby school districts, but we also delve deeply into those systems that look very similar to Oconee County from a demographic and from a performance perspective. For our purposes today, we will review information that we received and gathered from the Georgia Alliance of School Resource Officers and Educators, short in GAZRO, and from the Beaufort City Schools and Forsyth County Schools. Our research uncovered some statistics that are really important to share with you tonight. According to GAZRO, more than 75% of Georgia's school systems have SROs in place. There are 180 school districts in Georgia, so approximately 135 districts with SROs. GAZRO recommends that school systems use a ratio of 1 SRO to every 600 students. Georgia SRO training, and this is important, does not focus solely on law enforcement training. Instead, it employs what's called a triad model. I think of this as a stool with three legs, and all three legs are equally important to preventing and mitigating catastrophic events in our schools. Those three parts are law enforcement, this is the piece that you've discussed for a long time with the Sheriff's Office, counseling and mentoring, and law-related education. I've come to consider school safety really in two buckets. On one hand, there's prevention, and on the other hand, there's mitigation. There should be a strong emphasis placed on prevention, security, and not just on response. This is why the other two parts of the school stool, the counseling and mentoring and law-related education, are of significant importance. Understand that an SRO, in their training, they move from a typical deputy training as an enforcer, and as an SRO, they become a protector. I'm here tonight to impress on the Board of Education how important it is that the letter of agreement that you've authorized Dr. Branch to discuss with the Sheriff's Office reflect a plan to put SROs in all schools as a number-one priority. And we ask that you commit to a timeline, and that you keep the public informed of the progress against that timeline.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett.
Next is Katherine Casto.
Welcome, Ms. Casto.
Good evening. My name is Katherine Casto. I live in Bishop, Georgia. I have a daughter who is in 7th grade. I'm going to speak to you about why schools need SROs. Under Georgia law, every public school shall prepare a school safety plan to help curb the growing incidence of violence in schools, to respond effectively to such incidents, and to provide a safe learning environment for Georgia's children, teachers, and other school personnel. Having SROs has nothing to do with call volume. Almost every district with whom we spoke, including the executive director of GAZRO, who is Murray Cogod, the decision to implement SROs as part of school safety measures is not based on the amount of violence or problems existing within the schools. These districts recognize that SROs provide multifaceted benefits for their district beyond just law enforcement. So what does the job of an SRO entail? The state of Georgia adheres to the triad SRO model, which focuses on three types of SRO activities: law enforcement being one, counseling mentoring two, and law-related education three. So under law enforcement, the presence of officers on campus enhances the perception of safety, and they also alleviate disruptions in school. Under counseling and mentoring, SROs get to know the students, they know their faces and their names, and this is especially true for at-risk students. Under law-related education, SROs are available to provide training and education to teachers, students, parents, and staff, including champs, which we already have in our school system. The focus is on, I'm sorry, the focus is on response. SROs are able to respond to a threat more rapidly than outside law enforcement. The national average response time for law enforcement officers, three minutes. Per Murray Cogod of GAZRO, response time for SRO is 35 to 40 seconds. This response time is in conjunction with radio systems within the school. Haversham County runs zones similar to Oconee County, but zones are not enough. Response time is important. As we saw in Appalachia, an AR-15 contains 30 rounds per magazine or more without reloading. A 9-millimeter handgun typically contains 16 rounds or more, plus one in chamber, without reloading. Every second counts. And while SROs are not the cure-all to an event like Appalachia, it is another layer of protection, a layer of protection that our children in the school system needs. We need to focus on prevention and security. We acknowledge that there are challenges, and that hiring SROs will take time. Important to also address is SROs will relieve the unfair responsibility that's on the administrators and teachers to identify and mentor a potential threat, so they may focus on teaching our childrens. And I just want to reiterate what Ms. Argo stated at our work session, that safety and security is a priority. Our goal should be to create an environment where teachers can focus on teaching, students can concentrate on learning, and our parents can feel safe and have peace of mind that they're sending their school, I'm sorry, that they're sending their children to a safe environment. And we appreciate all you're doing to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casto.
Next is Angela Martin.
Welcome, Ms. Martin.
My name is Angela Martin. My address is 1820 Wild Azalea Lane, Athens, Georgia. I'm an OCPS parent, and I will discuss school safety. During our research, we carefully looked at other systems most similar to Oconee County. Those districts included Beaufort City Schools and Forsyth County Schools. While Beaufort is a smaller district and has more economically disadvantaged students, it is currently ranked as the number-one school district in Georgia, and in terms of performance, is similarly situated with Oconee. Chief Mindy Bayreuther of Beaufort City Schools has personal interest in Oconee. Her daughter subbed at one of our local elementary schools while at UGA. As a sub, Chief Bayreuther's daughter was concerned with the lack of SROs in the Oconee school, as her daughter had recently experienced a hard lockdown at Union County Primary School on day one of her placement in August of 2022. Beaufort City maintains a small footprint, as all schools are located within one square mile of each other. Beaufort also has a low call volume, and despite Beaufort's demographics, the school moved forward with its SRO program in 2019 as a security measure citing the intangible benefits of SROs. Following the Uvalde shooting in 2022, the program expanded to include officers in all Beaufort schools. Beaufort attracts the best of the best officers, marketing SRO positions with competitive pay and TRS, Teachers Retirement System. Beaufort utilizes push buttons for staff, radios, and a camera system. Beaufort SROs respond within seconds to one minute. Forsyth County is also a top-performing school district and is rated the number-three performing district in Georgia. While significantly larger than Oconee, its percentage of Title I schools and of economically disadvantaged students is comparable. Forsyth, also like Oconee, does not have a high call volume. Much of Forsyth County's SRO program information is publicly available online. We also spoke with the leader of the program. Forsyth's program was implemented 20 years ago. Following the Parkland, Florida, shooting in 2017, an initiative began to place SROs on every campus. A task force comprised of the Sheriff's Office, Daphron Schools, the Fire Department, and EMS conducted a comprehensive safety assessment across all campuses. Forsyth recognized the need for a comprehensive evaluation in response to two threats made against the system by students in the wake of Parkland. In conjunction with synergics, the response time is typically 30 to 45 seconds. One minute would be unusual. Oconee community, we greatly appreciate your support with your attendance this evening and your correspondence with local leadership. My hope is that our community continues to keep the tone respectful and our advocacy for our remaining 10 schools ever present. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Next is Devon Hartness-Smith.
Welcome, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Caulkwood for getting my name right. It almost never happens, so thank you. As you heard, my name is Devon Hartness-Smith. I live off Highway 15 in South Oconee, and I have an Oconee County middle schooler and an Oconee County high schooler. I want to thank the ladies who spoke before me. They have put in hours of work calling and researching, and the presentation that you heard from them is really just a sliver of what they know, and I would welcome you to meet with them and talk with them about any questions you have, because they are armed with facts. And they just shared a lot of this with me last minute, because I expressed an interest. So I also want to thank all of you, because the fact that we even have an action item on the agenda tonight, from what you did at the work session last week, says that we're all on the same page, right? We're all working towards the same goal. We're all working towards the same goal, and I don't think you'd have the crowd you had here tonight if we didn't all really feel pretty unified about this. So I want to thank you for that. It's a recognition of our concerns, it's a recognition of your concerns. Obviously, we're here because of what happened in Appalachia, and that's what's brought this to the forefront again, but we know it's not the first time that the Board has considered this. As recently as April of 2023, I believe, the issue of SROs was brought up, and at the time, there were reasons given for why that may not have been what you thought was the right fit. But on behalf of myself and at least the ladies before me, and I'm guessing most of this room, everyone thinks it could be a good fit now, and we're asking you to take some steps beyond just tonight's action item, to seriously discuss and consider, and most importantly, keep us informed with a timeline with deadlines. If you've ever been a parent, if you've ever been a business owner, if you've ever been anything, you know that without deadlines, due dates, and timelines, things just don't happen, right? And that's part of transparency. And I know some members of the Board and some members who are running for the Board talked about transparency at a recent meeting of the parties here leading up to the election, and that's something that matters in this instance too, right? And so we'd really ask for a commitment, not just to explore this, I appreciate the explorations on the table, but to keep us informed monthly would be great. We have these meetings, it's open to all of us, we can all come. If you can keep this on the agenda so that we're going to know what's actually being done, what's been discussed, that would be appreciated. You know, we understand that you've got a lot of decisions ahead of you, but we're involved, and we're going to stay involved, and we're going to keep this at the forefront of our minds. And so that kind of transparency would really help us to know that you're doing that as well. And I might be your only speaker who finishes ahead of time, so you can remember that part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Daniel Bennett.
Welcome, Mr. Bennett.
Hi, my name is DJ Bennett. I live at one-six-two-zero Eisenhower Avenue, and I have a middle schooler and an elementary schooler in Oconee County Schools. In addition to being an Oconee County citizen, I am actually an administrator in the Barrow County School System at Winder Barrow High School. As someone who spent seven years at Appalachia and is currently in the Barrow County School System, as you can imagine, the last two weeks have been the most harrowing of my career. Everything from synergics to lockdown drills worked right at Appalachia, and four were still killed, with many hurt in the minute or so that it took for the SRO to respond. It is hard to imagine what would have happened if the response time was greater or if the responder was not intimately familiar with the building. I want to thank, first of all, the BOE and Dr. Branch for responding quickly. With those thanks, also comes a challenge to continue the implementation of SROs until all of our schools are easily secured. School resource officers aren't just cops in schools. I've had the pleasure of working with excellent officers in multiple schools who not only kept schools secure, but they added positively to the culture of our building. They made connections with students, they helped many grow up with a positive relationship with law enforcement. To talk about one of our own school resource officers, he wore a sign that said "Free hugs" for the last week, and you wouldn't believe the volume of students who came up to take him up on that and the diversity of that student group. Many types of students came up and said, "Yeah, I'll take one." It was truly beautiful to see. They also intimately know our buildings and can respond quickly during a crisis. I have two kids in OCS, and I'm so thankful for their teachers and their administrators. They have truly blessed our family. I am friends with OCS educators. We hang out, we worship, and we spend time together. I want my kids, their teachers, and my friends to be safe and secure. School resource officers contribute to this security and to the culture of excellence in our school system. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Waiting for the clock to reset. Our next speaker is the Reverend Beth Dickinson.
Welcome, Reverend Dickinson.
Thank you so much for your time. My name is Beth Dickinson, and I live at twenty-five-sixty Clubhouse Lane in Stadem, Georgia. I have a NOHS graduate, and I have a sophomore at North Oconee also. I have the distinct privilege of working at Bethlehem First United Methodist Church, which is located three miles from Appalachia. The people in Barrow County are near and dear to my heart, and I never want to see what has happened there happen here. Four people were killed, nine injured, in fifty-two seconds. And this tragedy didn't happen in some other state, it happened twelve miles from Dove Creek Elementary and Middle Schools. The suspect and his family live eight miles from my home. This was a Columbine tragedy in my backyard, and it affected people who I care about in my congregation and the Barrow community. Again, the church I work at is three miles from Appalachia. We had to lock down our preschool when we heard about the active shooter. We had moms of students at Appalachia in the building, and I watched in horror as they tried in vain to reach their children. Some moms were crying, some were mad, and others were still trying to reach their children on the phone. We prayed for all of them, we cried with them, and then they went to Appalachia High School to find their children, and I saw for a moment what it is like to have a child in a mass-shooting school conflict, and my heart broke. As we spoke with our church members and we heard stories of kids who were in the math hall when the shooting started, teachers heard shots, and then they got their kids back inside the rooms. We heard of students who stopped the bleeding of their classmates and teachers. We heard from parents who sat all day in the stadium with their kids, who were physically safe but emotionally wounded. We also heard of one mom who was looking for her son, who couldn't find him. Later, we learned that he was one of the deceased. The carnage was too much to comprehend. As much as the room cleared, as each room was cleared, the students and the teachers exited the building with their arms raised under the watchful eye of armed law enforcement, safe and traumatic at the same time. Appalachia is the school cluster next to our cluster in Oconee County, and I want you to hear that. My son at North Oconee did not go on lockdown, and I was concerned all day long, and I continued to send him texts saying, "Are you sure you're not on lockdown?" He is sometimes a little spacey, and so I said, "Are you sure?" And he's not. We live less than a mile. If we lived less, if we lived a mile further down the road, we would be in the Appalachia School District. So this was too close to my home. The word "community" doesn't come close to describe what happened at Appalachia after this event. The words of Sheriff Judge Smith have been the cry of Barrow County, "Love will prevail." And I do believe that love will prevail over this instance, but it's going to take a lot of therapy, it's going to take a lot of prayer, and it's going to take a lot from each and every person there. And I pray for us that we might consider putting resource officers in each and every one of our schools. Barrow County has two in each high school. They have one that they share between the middle and elementary schools, and those are probably going to increase. The response time from the SRO officer was, it was under a minute, and still we lost so many. So I just ask that you consider to place SROs in each and every school in Oconee County. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dickinson.
Next is Jason C. Poole.
Welcome, Mr. Poole.
Jason Poole at twelve-oh-one Founders Boulevard, Athens, Georgia. I've got two kids at Malcolm Bridge Middle and one at Malcolm Bridge Elementary. I would like to start off by thanking all the teachers, school administrators, for making Oconee County School System one of the best in the state of Georgia. You all have a thankless job, but I want you to know that we appreciate you. What happened at Appalachia High School was devastating and right in our backyard. My wife and I came home from being at our Atlanta office, and our daughter was brutally shaken by the events and asked what we could have done to protect her, which made my heart drop to my ankles. What are we doing to protect our kids while they're at school? Appalachia High School had the same panic alert system we have, which they have, they had an SRO, which we do not, and four people are dead, and many others are seriously injured, both mentally and physically. While those are great tools, they are not enough to protect our kids. If we are serious about protecting our kids, teachers, from this senseless violence, then we need to make it impossible for someone to walk into a school with weapons, period. The technology is there, among many other systems that are not implemented. While we may be one of the best last counties to install SROs at our schools, let's be the first school system where we prevent a person from entering our schools with a weapon. You cannot walk in any sporting event or government office without walking through metal detectors and bag checks, so why are we not doing this at our schools? I wish that every kid had a safe home life with loving parents, but unfortunately, we know that is not the case for every kid in our school system. I know these are random acts of violence, but we, as a society, have got to make our schools safer and prevent anyone from walking into their schools with weapons. These protocols currently involve people getting shot, and that is not good enough for our students, teachers, faculty, and staff. We, as a community, need to do more.
Thank you, Mr. Poole.
Next is Rosie Tucker.
Welcome, Ms. Tucker.
I am an Oconee County mom of three and mentor at the elementary, middle, and high school for the last five years. My agenda today is very simple. I'm asking you to listen, make a serious plan, and invest. Listen, in today's Washington Post, Annie Brown, the aunt of the Appalachia High School shooter, gave a sobering interview. She shared screenshots that Cole Gray had been, quote, "begging for months," end quote, "for mental health help," and he, quote, "was begging for help from everybody around him, and the adults around him failed him," end quote. Mental health in young people is something we cannot afford to ignore. Students who are struggling, who feel isolated or bullied, sometimes have no safe space to express their emotions. Without a proper outlet, these feelings can spiral into very dangerous actions for themselves, other students, and teachers. Early intervention and consistent mental health will not just help our students, but it really means life or death. Number two, make a plan. First, we need to insist in a culture of inclusivity, where students feel accepted and heard. This means tackling bullying, fostering open conversations, and encouraging kindness. Second, we need to create clear channels for students and staff to see something, say something. By prioritizing mental health and creating an environment where students feel safe speaking up, we can significantly reduce the risk of violence. Finally, we must invest in better mental health resources. That includes hiring more counselors, social workers, providing mental health training for teachers and staff, and making sure students are aware that asking for help is both normal and necessary. Schools should be equipped not only to educate, but also to support the emotional health of every student. The grandeur recommendations to our Board of Education from March 2018 documented the following risks, which included: no full-time resource officers on schools, at all school levels, and there were only two social workers for our school district, which is not enough for the volume of students we have. We are in 2024, and until now, the Board of Education has not taken action. I don't want my kids or my neighbors to be part of the body count to justify action. Three, no excuses, invest. Oconee County has a substantial unallocated reserve to help fund a smart plan. At the state level, today, there was a message from the school superintendent, Richard Woods, advocating for a state budget to include additional funding for school safety. Additionally, there are more than a billion dollars in federal grants available for safety and mental health in schools through the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act, available until 2026. The Green Lights Grant Initiative is a completely free platform designed to streamline this application process. I will be very happy to volunteer my time to help the Board and lead this initiative. I cannot help but thinking, if the tragedy that happened at Appalachia School a couple weeks ago could have been prevented, should Cole Gray please for mental health support be addressed by adequate resources or even as simple as having a mentor? I urge the Board and this community to finally take action before it is too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Next is Marla Greenwell.
Welcome, Ms. Greenwell.
So I am Marla Greenwell. My son attends Colin Ferry Elementary, and I live at one-one-five Sumner Court. So as just stated, I am a parent of a local elementary school student, and thank you for your attention this evening as I share some of my personal concerns as it relates to school culture, as well as school safety within our district. When I learned of the events at Appalachia High School on September fourth, I found myself needing to explain the situation to my child. We had never talked about this before. This was like a new topic for us. So before I had all of the details, it was very early on, I shared that in order for something like this to have happened, it meant that a person responsible had to be in a lot of pain, because hurt people hurt people. And as more details had been revealed, it's obvious that there was a lot of hurt involved, as Rosie just mentioned, and that we did have a child who slipped through the social safety net, and when he lost his humanity, it came at a tragic cost. Now, I know, and not all of us have the privilege of growing up in a household where we're supported, and for that reason, we need to very seriously consider a comprehensive and holistic approach to supporting a healthy engagement and connectedness within our schools, in addition to what happens at the family unit. When thinking about a holistic approach to healthy school environments, I know from working in the education field myself for nearly two decades that we absolutely cannot expect our teachers to run point on a direct plan, but they are the experts on what they're dealing with from day to day. Our schools need the support of more robust social services framework, which could potentially include more social workers, more school counselors, more school psychologists. Those are the helpers with the proper training and supporting mental health, which in turns gives all students a sense of felt safety. We, as parents, and you, as the school board, must listen to our teachers and administrators and give them a forum to share their candid feedback, even if that means anonymous feedback. They can tell you about the needs they see in their schools and the resources that would be helpful, where we can do a better job of getting it right. The mental health within our school buildings is a non-negotiable, and we need to be considering not only students, but how we can promote a culture where our teachers feel that they have the wraparound support and resources that they need to support their students. By doing so and following through, we will be taking care of the mental health of our teachers, allowing them to put their focus on what they do best, which is teaching and loving our children. I know that we all likely could agree that school rankings and test scores and social media spotlights will mean absolutely nothing to any of us if we find ourselves with kids who have fallen through the cracks. Please work with a sense of urgency, and as others have mentioned, transparency, and keeping us involved to discover the best path to a sense of belonging and connectedness for all of our students and all of our staffs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Next is Adam Geiger.
Welcome, Mr. Geiger.
Good evening, Adam Geiger. I live eleven-oh-one Broadlands Drive, Watkinsville. I've been in this county since nineteen ninety-two. I'm a builder developer. I developed Calls Creek, and I've got a daughter in Oconee High School. And I just wanted to speak to, to tell the Board that I am in favor of an armed resource officer or sheriff or police officer at the schools. If you don't think we need an armed officer at the school, it would be like saying we don't need fire extinguishers at the schools, because we got a great don't need fire extinguishers at the schools, because we had a great fire department, and they would be there within minutes, which the sheriff would be there within minutes also. But when seconds count, there's fire extinguishers throughout the school, and that's for a reason. When you have an emergency, you have to, seconds matter. And Sheriff James Hale has really stepped up. I drop my daughter off at school, and there's two or three sheriff's cars there, it makes me feel better. And I just wanted to emphasize and speak, because we need it, we, we need it now, we don't need it next year. We want the board to act.
Next is Asia Almasi.
Welcome, Ms. Almasi.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Asia Almasi. I live at 1030 Jester Place, Watkinsville, and I have an upcoming primary student who will be attending a Coney primary. Like many, oh, thank you, like many of the audience, I'm here tonight as a parent concerned about the safety of our children. The recent violence at Appalachia High School is a reminder that our community is not immune to school shootings. Our children's biggest concerns should be their grades, should be their sports performance, their dance recitals. Not one of them should be concerned about coming home after a day at school. I support full-heartedly having student resource officers in every school, including elementary and middle school, but I believe we also need to focus heavily on prevention strategies before a crisis can occur. Looking at the data from the U.S. Secret Service's 2021 Report on Inverting Targeted School Violence shows, most attackers experienced psychological, behavioral, or developmental issues. All attackers had social stressors, particularly with peers or romantic partners. Most attackers were victims of bullying, often in front of others, and all attackers showed warning signs, and most communicated their intent to cause harm. The report's key message is this: targeted school violence is preventable when we recognize the signs and intervene early. With that in mind, I'd like to focus on three critical strategies that were recommended in the report. Some of these may already exist to a certain degree, but if not, I believe they should be implemented or enhanced. The first is the creation of a multidisciplinary threat assessment team for each school, the next being risk identification training for staff and students. Students are on the ground and are more likely to notice behavioral changes in other, in their peers before staff membermind, and increased mental health resources, including anti-bullying training programs. The threat assessment team would be made up of teachers, counselors, administrators, and they would work together to identify concerning behaviors in students early on. Their goal is to intervene before a crisis can occur. But a team is not, a team alone is not enough. They need risk identification, risk identification training, which would equip them and students with the tools to recognize these early warning signs. And finally, we need to address the root causes, which is mental health and sometimes bullying. We need strong anti-bullying programs that can teach conflict resolution, peer mediation, and nonviolent problem-solving skills. I believe these three strategies, threat assessment teams, risk identification training, and anti-bullying programs, can change the future of our schools, and our children deserve this, and we can give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Almasi.
Next is Allison Lawlerstett.
Welcome, Ms. Lawlerstett.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Allison Lawlerstett. I live at 1230 Stone Shoals Terrace in Watkinsville, and I will be speaking about reporting student behaviors in schools. I have the privilege of being in my 11th year as a parent in Oconee County schools. I am also a former Oconee County school nurse in good standing. Today, I would like to use my voice to speak on the behalf of an anonymous educator who I greatly respect. This is their statement. Let's start by saying that there are many educators in this district who live in fear of being shamed, reprimanded, placed on a professional development plan, or even fired for speaking out about the concerns we have over anyone with administrative authority. This is not because educators wish to defame or slander, but rather to be taken seriously when they go to their administrators with concerns over real issues that exist in every building. When citizens see all the banners of achievement regarding Oconee as number one in the state, those serving in the trenches mask their mental and emotional anguish under a forced smile. In case anyone is wondering, we are not all right. We are trained to report any student behaviors of concern, and we do. Doing so can lead to getting students the help they need in personal, emotional, behavioral, and academic growth. This is what all educators want for their students. But if someone had told us in the early days of our careers that the future reporting of concerning behaviors would ever backfire on us, we would have called that person a liar. When teachers report students who are repeat offenders in acts of aggression or threats, we are oftentimes ignored because they're in some unspoken expectation not to report too much. If there is a student with behaviors of concern, and they happen to be related to someone of significance, politician, coach, lawyer, minister, or just anyone with a lot of money, then conversations are often had, more often in person than in print, with reminders of just how important these people are, because clearly, it's more important to sweep the mess under the rug than it is to draw the line for students and their families as to what will not be tolerated in our schools. Administrators need to do better to protect their faculty, staff, and students when there are many students engaging in threatening behaviors that could lead to a devastating event. It shouldn't take as shooting in a neighboring district for you to suddenly take it all so seriously. Just a few years ago, there could be over 100 qualified educators applying for a single job opening in the district. You are now hemorrhaging highly educated and qualified teachers and support staff, and some of those are because you directly drove them out for not being Oconee enough. You must take us seriously when we report behaviors of concern. You must do what is right, rather than what makes you look good. On behalf of this educator and myself, thank you very much.
Next is Merrill Herr.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Merrill Herr. I live at 1251 Calls Creek Circle. I have two children in the Oconee system. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Branch, and members of the board. I am a parent of two students, and many of my parents, fellow parents here tonight, have been advocating for the safety of our children. Tonight, I'm here as someone who studies and writes about employee well-being. I'm here to advocate for the teachers and staff in our district. In 2022, Gallup reported that those working in K-12 education had the highest burnout rate compared to other major industries in the United States. These data points came directly on the heels of the COVID-19 pandemic, but Gallup noted that the pandemic only exacerbated teacher burnout. When we think about the demands that we put on our K-12 educators, it's difficult, not difficult, to imagine how the burnout statistics are so high for them. Even before we factor in school violence, teachers and their support staff bear an enormous burden, and often do so without the compensation, support, and mental health resources that appropriately dignify the tremendous value they bring to our children and our communities. But let's for a moment consider the impact of school violence on their well-being. A 2004 study of 315 high school teachers in the southeast looked at the relationship between burnout and teachers' direct and indirect exposure to 10 types of school violence. The researcher found, quote, "direct and indirect exposure to violence, both psychological and physical, resulted in higher emotional exhaustion and depersonalization," end quote. Those are both symptoms of burnout. A 2012 study in Maryland of 3,000 high school teachers found that those teachers who had trouble handling difficult student behaviors and those who felt less safe in their schools tended also to have higher levels of burnout. Commenting on the results of their study, the researchers wrote, "Schools need to regularly assess staff perceptions of safety and identify ways to create environments where neither students nor staff worry about the physical or emotional safety and security." One of the challenges of assessing staff perceptions of school safety is that some school employees may not experience the psychological safety needed to express their concerns authentically to administrators. Some may remain silent because they believe their perspectives won't be appreciated; others refuse to speak up because they fear repercussions for them and their peers. This silence is also linked to burnout. Teachers and support staff are on the front lines when it comes to school safety. They need to be able to say to their administration that they want school resource officers in every building, that they need help when it comes to communicating about school violence to their kids in their classrooms. They need their district to reevaluate the school's visitor access pathways and practices. The district needs better policies for addressing bullying and unsafe behaviors in the classrooms, and that the district needs more mental health professionals. Teachers and support staff have perhaps the best vantage point of what is needed to keep our schools safe. If we fail to listen to the teachers and support staff, if we do not heed their concerns, we jeopardize not only their well-being, but also the safety of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herr.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Cowan. I live in Bishop. I'm here with my wife, Macy, our five children, and us live in Bishop, and three of those five children attend school here. I grew up in Walton County, and Macy grew up in Oconee County. Just wanted to say, we do love Oconee County, and we're very, very glad to live here. We're glad to call it home. We're here tonight to make a couple of arguments regarding the justification for having SROs in all the OCS schools during open hours. Most of my comments will just echo the previous comments from all the previous speakers, and I do want to say I appreciate all the previous speakers and all the points they've made. Excuse me. My main question is, why would you not do this immediately? The gentleman who spoke several times ago said, "We need this now, not next year," and I just wanted to echo that even further. Immediately is important. Here's my justification, just two or three points. Having school resource officers in all of the schools is an inherent deterrent to violence. Point number two, it teaches children the positive impact of law enforcement. And lastly, and most importantly, third point, if there is an incident that does occur, the response time is markedly faster, seconds, not minutes. You've heard plenty of data on that already today. I wanted to leave you with this, SROs in the two high schools is not enough. Dr. Branch, we've mailed you a letter, and we've also sent a letter to Governor Kemp. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan.
Next is Katie Green.
Welcome, Ms. Green.
Hi there. I'm Katie Green, and I'm a resident of Oconee County. I live on Forest Road in Watkinsville, and I'm running for post five of the Board of Education. I had one thing to say, and then I've added a lot as we've gone along. First of all, this really is an amazing community of supportive parents, teachers, family members, citizens, and, and I also want to echo a couple of points that they have made so far to help students and employees in the schools. I, as a, as a former teacher and an educator who works full-time in a school, I always think about the students first. I'm gonna try not to get choked up as I talk about this, but to think about the employees too is so important, and just hearing some of the things that people have said about educator, trauma, secondary trauma that they experience has really reminded me of some moments that I had during my teaching career, and I haven't taught at a school that had a school shooting, thankfully, but I did do my student teaching at a school that had had one the year before. And just to see the aftermath of that was a lot. As a student teacher, sometimes I wonder how I made it actually into the teaching field. Gosh, there should be tissues up here. I'm really glad that people not only mentioned SROs, which was the immediate point that came to a lot of people's minds, but also that early intervention is really, really needed. And the idea that we could foster this culture of inclusivity to help students that don't have a connection at school, that maybe don't have a connection to an adult and don't have a connection to other students. We know that that's so important from the, the research that's been done about school violence. We've had multiple students since the Appalachia, thank you, since the Appalachia shooting in Oconee County who have made threats and have been referred to juvenile justice. So we obviously have more students who need support in multiple different ways in this county. So I just want to urge and encourage you to think of not only the SROs, which I think are vitally important, but also all those mental health pieces that people mentioned for employees and for students. To get to the less emotional part, I wanted to follow up on the question that I asked you a couple of weeks ago, or last month, about voting in schools, and how the principals in our high schools were, in Oconee County, were supporting student voting for the first time. I did email the principals, and I got responses from both of them, thankfully. Mr. Stevens shared that Oconee County High School, they hold registration activities in April, they post registration info for students, they grant excused absences for students to vote on Election Day, which is lovely. At North Oconee, they advertise voter registration office options, and they also allow excused absences according to Principal Carter. Clark Central just announced today that they are holding a field trip to take students to early voting, which I think is amazing, and I would love to see Oconee County do more, not just for the students that are determined and driven and are going to do this on their own, but for all of our students so that we're supporting the ones who might need a field trip to get them to the voting place. Thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Next is Reginald Wade.
Welcome, Mr. Wade.
Thank you. My name is Reginald Wade. I live at 1061 Oak Lake Trail, Watkinsville, Georgia. I am a husband of a spouse that work at the school system. My daughter goes to the same high school that I graduated from, and I'm proud to be back in Oconee County. I think all of the speakers here tonight spoke about the need for SROs, and I think one in the high school is a good start, because you have to account for, what about that officer taking vacation, out sick, and other thing? It puts a strain on the backfield from a law enforcement agency. My daughter, the night after the shooting, came to me and say, Daddy, I don't want to go to school tomorrow. As a law enforcement officer, 37 years, I did not even turn my chair to look back at her. I say, "You going to school tomorrow because they have SROs, deputies at the school, administrators have a plan in place, and you will be safe." Now, but I was still concerned, because we don't know when something like that can happen. It could happen without notice. We could plan, plan better if we knew when a tragedy or crime would take place, but we must be prepared. Having a plan is good, but that plan must be followed. What I want to know tonight, will we have people checking that policy, plans, and, and going into the schools unannounced and make sure we don't get lax by the safety plans we have in place, like keeping the door locked? Many times, students leave the classroom to go to bathroom, reality, that door is not always shut. I have experienced, back in 1994, I walked the halls of a high school as the only resource officer in that school. I went on to supervise, I went on to be police chief for that particular resource officer. I coached Little League football. I made a direct impact on those kids in the school. To this day, they don't call me chief, they don't call me pastor, they call me coach. And I think by being, and I commend the school district and the Sheriff Department working collaboratively to get this done. It should have been done a long time ago, and, and it's late better than never, but I can tell you this, it will put a challenge on the sheriff office, because everybody's not standing in line to be a certified police officer. Not only that, you just cannot put anybody in the school without children. They must have the right temperament. They must be interviewed and vetted by not just the Sheriff Department, the school district, and others in the community that are doing the right background, make sure we have the right people in the school for the safety of our kids. Not only that, we have to look at recruitment. It's not easy to hire. Most police departments and law enforcement are short personnel. It's hard to hire and retain. Georgia was the, I'm gonna take about 10 seconds. Georgia, it took 400 hours. Georgia, it took 400 hours, I mean, 408 hours to be certified police officer. Recently, they made a change to 800 hours. They went from 11 weeks to 22 weeks. Sheriff will tell you, it takes a while to get a person through law enforcement application process. Not only that, they must get additional training as a resource officer, which is a 40-hour class given by the Georgia Public Safety Training Center. That is only given during the summer. So what we will have people in place, if they didn't come here with experience and have gotten that training, they will learn as they go. But I can tell you this, we must make sure we educate them with every opportunity to train it out there to walk the halls where not only our loved ones, I'm passionate about it because my daughter is a senior this year. My wife been teaching for 28 years. I might get in trouble if I don't get the right year, but... And she's been doing a wonderful job. I thank you, and I thank this community for coming out and letting you all know that we mean business, and it's serious business because we want our kids protected.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Next is Nick Bath.
Welcome, Mr. Bath.
I'm Nick Bath. I live on Snowsmill Road in Oconee County, and I'm the proud grandpappy of two of your graduates. I'm here tonight just to support everyone here that's speaking for SROs. We had the opportunity to implement this about a year ago and chose not to. Now we're fortunate that we have an opportunity to reconsider it. I hope you will do so.
Thank you, Mr. Bath.
Next is Ian Canales.
Welcome, Mr. Canales.
My name is Ian Canales. I live at 315 Twin Oaks Circle, Bogart, Georgia 30622. Thank you so much for the chance to speak. My wife and I have had four kids, go through the Oconee County School System, two graduates of North Oconee, one at Dove Creek Middle, and one senior at North Oconee. I have had the privilege of being a teacher in Barrow County for 24 years. I've experienced the great blessing of having SROs at our school. I've got to know quite a number of them and seen the impact they have, the great impact they have on students. My wife is a teacher at Appalachia High School, and, oh, gosh. I just, she saw firsthand how crucial it is, how many lives were saved by having those heroes on school grounds. The nightmare lasted less than a minute. The SROs were the first ones there to apprehend the shooter. I thank God for those guys, for keeping my wife safe. And I think we owe it to the students of Oconee County Schools to provide them with the same level of support and security and protection. And I thank you so much for the time and for considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canales.
Next is Stephen Cramble.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Michael Cramble. I live at 150 Bernice Drive, Bogart, Georgia. I am a graduate of North Oconee in 2016. I completed my student teaching at Malcolm Bridge Middle School, and I come to you today as a teacher at Appalachia High School. So on the morning of that day, about 10:20, I was alerted by my smart board due to the Synergy X program that a hard lockdown had initiated. Within five seconds, I was able to give my students instructions to go to the corner and hide before I heard gunshots ring out about three doors away from my classroom. From what was reported by our sheriff, Judge Dread... Oh, excuse me, Judge Smith, okay? 52 seconds is what had occurred from the first shot rang to the assailant being put in handcuffs. During throughout gunfire, I remember telling my students that everything would be good, everything will be safe, that everything will pass, and I'll ensure that I can get you home. I remember later, within short time after gunfire, hearing the SRO shout commands to have the assailant give himself up, which then he did. Our SRO is a member of our community. I knew it was him, not by his name, just merely by his voice, and from that I knew we were saved. It was critical that the testament of me even being here today is because of that man and how Barrow County had put that man in a successful position to prevent the shooting that occurred, or at least limit the damage. However, you know, Mason, Christian, Ms. Irmy, Coach Aspenwall, don't get that luxury. They're not here with us today anymore. And me personally, I won't recount what I saw, but I, going through that carnage, I do not wish that on anybody to experience for themselves. I will say that me, you know, my experience as a North Oconee graduate, that I wish I had a better relationship with an SRO. The idea of having that, I had that in Chicago when I was a student there throughout high school, you know, Detective Wisconsin, I still remember his name, I still remember the importance that he had on our community. And I wish I had that experience at North Oconee High School when I was a student. And these kids deserve that now. From, I have fond memories of being a student in this county. I want other students to feel safe as I did back then as well, but now there's new fears among us. I think about how this county is great in everything, really, that it does. I truly mean that. I think it's great in extracurriculars, in athletics, in academics. However, I don't want any hesitation that we should also be number one in public safety as well for our students as well. We have those expectations on everything else that we do, and I hope you all can also push those same expectations on this new matter that we have at hand. Thank you all so much for your time, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Cramble.
Next is Kim Leverett.
Welcome, Ms. Leverett.
Thank you. My name is Kim Leverett. I live in 1360 Julian Drive in Watkinsville. I am a proud mom of a junior at North Oconee High School. I am here tonight as a concerned parent and a mental health provider. I'm a psychiatric clinical nurse specialist. I have a PhD in psychology, and over the past 20 years, I have seen my share of individuals struggling with PTSD, and it is indeed a struggle. The afternoon of the shooting and talking with my son, I was working to maintain a poker face, remaining calm, as he's describing to me that he and his friend devised a plan that they would break out a window and run versus, this is his quote, "versus being sitting ducks." It broke my heart that my son and his friend felt they, as students, had to develop their own safety plan because help would arrive too late. I'm not going to go delve into the four reasons I think we need SROs, rapid response time, deterrence potential attackers, enhanced safety protocol training, on-the-spot decision-making, but there are several factors, and other people have mentioned this earlier, that contribute to school shootings, making this a complex and multifaceted event. And here's some key contributing factors. Access to firearms, mental health issues, as has been brought up over and over, social isolation and bullying, media and cultural influences, lack of adequate school safety Finally, when I looked at the statistics, Oconee County High School, they have four counselors for 1,246 students. North Oconee has four counselors for over 1,300 students. That's an average of one counselor per over 300 students. I would personally love to know what the counselors have to say about what they are seeing day in and day out in our schools, what they are hearing day in and day out. I don't know who said this, but it's basically, culture and community are the family of the family. And my hope is that we will be a united county and cultivate a culture that is proactive versus reactive in the face of growing violence and senseless loss in our nation, and that, you know, I love this county, but it does truly break my heart to feel like my son is like trying to break out a window to save his life and his friend's lives. Thank you for your time. Thank you for holding this and for listening to us as concerned parents and citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leverett.
Ms. Argyle, that concludes public communication.
Thank you. We want to thank each of you that spoke. We are listening, and we're glad that we had this big an audience to hear you. Next on our agenda is action items. Pardon? Some of us are going to speak when we have the action item. It's coming up. Next on the agenda are action items. Dr. Branch.
Yes, ma'am. Board members, you heard field trips presented last week. We'd recommend, if the board would like to, we can take A through L as one item. Those are all your out-of-state field trips, so we recommend the board approve A through items, A through L as presented.
Thank you. We need a motion. Ms. Parrish?
Second.
Second. Mr. Ransom, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Okay, up next, we have the North Georgia RESA Shared Services Contract, and we would recommend approval as presented.
Thank you.
So move.
Mr. Burgess?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Okay, our next item is the Certificate of the Board for Phase II Modifications of Oconee Primary, Oconee Elementary, and Oconee County High School. You heard from Mr. Rickenson that Primary Elementary and Oconee High School have been completed with those projects. All bills have been paid, and so we need to certify those completions for reimbursement purposes, so we would recommend approval as presented.
Much to approve.
Mr. Ransom?
Second.
Mr. Hammack? All in favor? Passes 5-0.
Okay, up next, we have the surplusing of vehicles. We have several buses that are end of life. You've heard that presentation from Dr. White last week, and we would recommend the board approve the surplus vehicles as presented.
Much to approve.
Mr. Ransom?
Second.
Ms. Parrish, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Okay, our final action item of the night is a presentation that you heard last week from Dr. Yancey, recommending that the board vote to authorize the superintendent to work with Sheriff James Hill to develop a memorandum of agreement that will provide a comprehensive law enforcement presence at all 12 of our schools. Recommend approval as presented.
I have a question about the approval. What are the next steps, once we approve this? Where do we go from there?
Sure. So if the board authorizes this next step, then what would happen next? Is Sheriff Hill and I would work with our staffs to develop a comprehensive plan, look at roles and responsibilities of SROs, the time they would be on our campus, the financial compensation that's necessary for the board from the sheriff's office, the equipping of those officers, and then the roles and responsibilities as they work with our students and our staffs.
Have we been talking with surrounding counties to kind of see what they're doing and get their feedback?
We have. As part of our comprehensive safety and security program, we have a continued pulse on what other systems are doing, but since this moment last week, all systems have kind of been talking about additional measures, where those are, whether or not, and school resource officers certainly a conversation within that. So we've been able to collect information from those systems and share information to those systems about best practices.
Which counties? Can you list those counties?
Yeah, we have been speaking with Northeast Georgia RESA, which is the 13 systems in Northeast Georgia.
So basically, everybody that touches us?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burgess?
I don't think there's any question about the seriousness of the discussion we're having and the issue that's before us. I think obviously, the conversations tonight and the presentations and discussions for all members of the community is just evidence of the seriousness of that, no different than the seriousness of the same conversation we've had over multiple years about the steps that we've put in place to address the safety and security of our school system with our students and staff and everybody else. I want to say I appreciate the willingness of the sheriff to work with our superintendent to try to develop this plan. It'll go a long way towards trying to address the conversation and the concerns that have been raised tonight. One term that's been used several times is a comprehensive plan, and I think it's important to make sure that we understand what a comprehensive plan is. We've had a lot of comments tonight about a multitude of components of what a comprehensive plan would look like. Obviously, one component of it is an SRO, is an SRO kind of discussion, but we've had multiple speakers talk about other factors that have to be considered, planned for, and dealt with when you talk about a comprehensive plan that focuses not only reaction, but prevention, which has been mentioned multiple times. I quit keeping count of how many times that term was used with us tonight. Obviously, a comprehensive plan has to not only deal with the reactions, but anticipation of issues that may come up in front of us, and it's going to have to focus on the operational issues of that, the logistics of that, the command and control, and then obviously the funding. I've sat here for 11 years and have developed a complete confidence in our superintendent and his staff, and the discussions about safety and security, and his ability to go to work with the sheriff in trying to develop a comprehensive plan that we can at some point bring back, that will deal with the multitude of points that have been raised tonight. So Jason, I just want to say, I'm going to, obviously, I'm going to vote for this. I suspect we all are, and I look forward to your discussions with us in the coming weeks about what the details and the specifics of how you're able to come to what you would define as that comprehensive plan that we've talked about.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to add, I mean, I think my experiences, I mean, you said you're talking to the other RESA, but then you are also very connected, I mean, with the governor's office, with, I mean, the superintendents across the country, correct? And engaged in organizations and leadership positions that give you access to...
Yes, yes, ma'am. We've been able to talk with, we can get feedback from lots of different areas, including some of the names and positions that have been mentioned tonight.
And I'd just like to say, thank y'all for being here, and the arguments that you presented were very helpful, and the research that you've done, and it really is important to us to hear from the community, and we value your perspectives and want the best for your children.
I want to echo that, and something I've heard Dr. Branch mention before is, the system is not any one of our systems. It's a community school system, and we're simply here to be able to help facilitate that. So it is very impactful to have everyone out today, and thank you for those of you who got up to speak, and also those of you that have reached out over the past couple of weeks to share your opinions, your stance, and the direction that you have for our system. And Dr. Branch, I believe that you've been an administrator in a school before that had a school resource officer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And also, I just want to say, I know over the past few days, being able to review MOAs, MOUs, and other different terminologies depending on the school systems to see how those systems interact with the sheriff's office, who I want to say, I'm very thankful that we have such a responsive sheriff's office that is so collaborative with us, whether we're adding on to a school, working with us through the Synergy X programs, and other things. So thank you, Sheriff Hill, for all of your help through that. One thing I would encourage and hope to see in the MOA will be to allow for adjustments as needed, as needs change. Hopefully, this will not be a static document that comes in and is put on a shelf and says, "This is how we're going to run it this year, next year, and 10 years from now." I know that's not the plan for it to be a static document, but do look forward as we get this worked out in the coming days and weeks, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
I know, I shared my thoughts last week. I am a retired educator. I had 24 years in the classroom as a teacher. The last few years of my career, I spent as a school administrator, and I was in a school system that did have SROs and do support SROs. I have seen the good that they can do. As somebody quoted, a quote that I said last week...
As somebody quoted, a quote that I said last week, "We want teachers to be able to focus on teaching. We want our students to be able to concentrate on learning and we want our parents to have peace of mind that they're sending their students to a safe environment." Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Branch, would you like to repeat your recommendation again?
Certainly. The recommendation before the board is to authorize the superintendent to work with Sheriff James Hill, develop a memorandum of agreement that will provide a comprehensive law enforcement presence at all 12 of our schools.
Thank you. We need a motion to do so.
Motion to approve Dr. Branch's work with Sheriff Hill to develop a comprehensive method of opera, or method of agreement to provide law enforcement officers to all 12 of our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Ransom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hammack. All in favor? Passes 5-0. That is the end of our action items. We do have a need to go into executive session and need a motion to do so.
I will make a motion that the board will adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters described on the affidavit to be attached to the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish.
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0.